Councilman Granville, is that you? Councilman Granville, is that you?
Yes, this is Kobe.
Eric?
Yes?
Good afternoon, or good evening, excuse me, and welcome to the Tempe City Council meeting for June 15th here in the Harry E. Mitchell Government Center. For all those that are able, could you please rise with the invocation by Councilmember Keating, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? Councilmember Keating?
I just ask that you all take a moment to pray silently to yourselves, or reflect, please. Thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda is item number three of minutes, Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to approve item 3A, 1, and 2.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage to approve items A1 and 2, and seconded by Councilmember Keating. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move approval of item 3B, 1 through 4.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Keating. All those in favor, please say aye. All right, all those opposed, same sign. That motion does move forward. Next item is reports and announcements. I have a couple, I'm gonna head down to the podium. Well, Juneteenth celebrates a very important event in the United States' history: the ending of slavery in our country. And today, Tempe celebrates this important time and the oldest-known celebration on June 19th of 1865. Although President Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation went into effect in January of 1863, it wasn't until Juneteenth that slavery was abolished in Texas and much of the Confederate South. I am proud to recognize this important day in our history today with a proclamation of Juneteenth in Tempe, Arizona. I'd like to invite Joanne Cooks. Joanne, if you could come forward, along with who, Joanne is the Chair of the African-American Advisory Committee to join me as well. Any other members, could you please come forward? And I would like to read a proclamation. And it states, "Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, formally abolishing slavery in the Confederacy; and whereas, on June 19th, 1865, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger landed in Galveston, Texas to enforce President Lincoln's two-and-a-half-year-old Emancipation Proclamation and declare freedom of all slaves; and whereas, every year after, former Texas slaves and their descendants joined in a celebration of freedom on June 19th, and the day became known as Juneteenth. And whereas, across the country, Americans continue to celebrate Juneteenth as a day to reflect the torment of slavery and remember the joyful Declaration of Freedom and rejoice with family and friends. And whereas, the Tempe Diversity's Office, the Tempe History Museum, and the African-American Advisory Committee will be hosting a Juneteenth celebration to honor African-American heritage and remember the lives of slaves. And whereas, this celebration gives all Tempeans the opportunity to commemorate the heritage of our city's African-American population as we renew our commitment to combat justice and hold the values of inclusion, equality, and justice." Now therefore, I, Mark Mitchell, Mayor, Tempe, Arizona, hereby declare June 17th, 2017, as Juneteenth Day in Tempe, Arizona. A round of applause. All right, one more announcement. And I want to thank Joanne, too, and the entire committee for all the work on the African-American Advisory Committee. Let's give them another round of applause. In keeping with the topic of human rights and diversity, I am excited to celebrate Pride Month in Tempe. Tempe takes pride in the great diversity of our city and the LGBTQ community is part of that diversity. I am so proud of Tempe's commitment to the LGBTQ equality. It's why the council passed an ordinance in 2014 to protect LGBTQ people from discrimination at home, at work, and in public places. It's why our citizens included these protections in our city charter by an overwhelmingly majority. It is why we have worked to make sure that our health benefits are inclusive of the needs of our transgender employees or their dependents. It's why, for three years running, we have earned a perfect score in the Human Rights Campaign Municipal Equality Index. Equality and diversity are core values of the city, and this is reflected in every element of what this organization does. So I'd like to invite all the department directors, the entire council, and our management team to join me down here at the podium. To join me down here at the podium. I'd also like to invite Jenny Belusek, our Diversity Manager, to join us, who leads much of our LGBTQ outreach. Also here with us tonight to celebrate Pride Month are our co-chairs of the Employee-Driven Tempe GSA, Vince Barburden and Jim Fish. Vince and Jim, you guys here? There you are. I thought I saw you. Can you please come down, join us, and receive the proclamation that we're grateful for all your work? And I'm going to read the proclamation as Vince and Jim come down. "Whereas, the city of Tempe is deeply committed to the equality of all, including lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer people and their allies; and whereas, the LGBTQ community has fought tirelessly for the equality and the rights and protections they deserve at home, at work, and in the public; and whereas, the fight for LGBTQ equality continues across Arizona, the United States and the entire world and the city of Tempe is a committed partner in this effort; and whereas, 2014, the Tempe City Council established protections for LGBTQ people from discrimination at home, at work, and in public spaces; and in 2015, the voters enshrined these protections in our Tempe City Charter by an overwhelming majority. The city of Tempe celebrates this great diversity of its employees, including those who identify as LGBTQ, and joins them in celebrating pride for who they are; and whereas, the city of Tempe joins the LGBTQ community in remembering its history, both challenging and joyous, celebrating its pride, and continuing to work for true equality for all people, no matter who they are or whom they love. Now therefore, I, Mark Mitchell, Mayor, Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare as June 2017 as LGBTQ Pride Month in Tempe, Arizona." I'd like to finish by acknowledging that while we've seen much progress in the LGBTQ community in recent years, there is still a lot of work left to do. We may have protections in Tempe, but 70% of all Arizonans and many Americans across the country still lack basic protections from discrimination. A gay or transgender person could lose their job simply for what, who they are and for who they love. So it's up to us to continue to support the LGBTQ community to get those protections statewide and hopefully nationwide. Thanks again to all of our city staff, my council colleagues, and the citizens of Tempe for making Tempe the diverse and inclusive city that we are. So happy Pride Day, month. Mr. Manager, you have any announcements?
No announcements at this time, thank you.
All right. Seeing none, next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. All the items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and enacted with one motion by the city council. Unless an item is removed for separate consideration, members of the public may remove items for separate consideration if there is an asterisk designated by it, which means it is a public hearing. And council members may remove any items for separate consideration. If you do wish to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a speaker's card, which can be found in the back of the council chambers, and please hand it to our city clerk. And when it is your time, I will call you. When is your turn to speak? The consent agenda is as follows: miscellaneous items, 5A1 through 5A16; awards and bids of contracts, items 5B1 through 5B4; and resolutions, items 5C1 through 5C9. Again, with the consent agenda as read, is there any agenda items that is marked with an asterisk that is a public hearing that you would like to have removed? Could you please get my attention now? Seeing none, I'll close that portion. Is there any items on the consent agenda that council would like to have removed for a separate consideration?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Granville.
Item 5C1.
Item 5C1. Okay. Anybody else have any items from the council? Seeing none. I look for a motion for the consent agenda as read with the removal of item 5C1 for separate consideration. It's been moved by Councilman Shapiro, seconded by Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage. Please vote. Councilmember Granville?
Aye.
That motion carries seven to zero with the consent agenda as read. Item 5C1, Councilmember Granville.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I would put item 5C1, it's along with item 6B2. I kind of view those as tied together, even though 6B2 is in its first hearing. You know, I'm really excited for ASU to do this project, but I still have some concerns. I think we need to work out as it relates to police, fire, how people are gonna be voting for bonds they might not be paying on, restrictions on height that we might put in place, student housing, transportation, taxing. There's a pretty long list. And I think we'll get it all sorted out, but I'd rather we had something that was maybe a little more temporary or that we at least had a placeholder so that we're not redoing the zoning and then negotiating it. I'd rather we, you know, did it in reverse order. First, we negotiated the agreement, and then we redid the zoning. I'm sure at the end of the day, it's all gonna work out fine. It's just my own personal preference.
Okay. Councilmember Keating?
Mayor, I motion we approve item 5C1 as written.
Second.
Okay, there's any other discussion? So there's been a motion to approve item 5C1 by Councilmember Keating, and there's a second by Vice Mayor Arredondo. I will note, it's not a public hearing item, but there is a member of the public that asked to speak. It's just a tradition. I mean, we don't, it's up to the council if you want to have it.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Mr. Barker?
Mayor, members of the council, thanks for the opportunity to address you this evening. Like Councilmember Granville, I'm here really to address two items together, 5C1, 6B2. But we'll keep the comments just to the 5C1 portion. The IGA is, in number eight, mentions development fees and sales tax, but stays silent on rental tax and bed tax, and trying to create parity between private and public development downtown. We are hoping that rental tax and bed tax will still be paid in the ASU Stadium and Facilities District. Similarly, number seven refers to Exhibit E, the street classification map. And in our conversation, which I'll present in 6B2, we're asking that there be one public route from downtown Tempe to McClintock. It can go in a circuitous way or any other form, but not using the intersection of Rio Salado in rural and University in rural to create one new route between downtown to the east. And that is referenced in Exhibit in the document that clearly calls out public and private streets. We're concerned that private streets may ultimately be closed to automobile traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, there's been a motion, and there's a second? Yes, Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage?
Thank you, Mayor, really quick. And Mr. Barker, I really do appreciate it, you know, not only the conversation, but I think your thoroughness of reviewing it and bringing forth some recommendations. And I know, I think, in a perfect world, maybe both parties wouldn't say this is perfect moving forward, but I have to say, it's been a long time coming and a lot of work from staff members from both sides trying to find the best resolution moving forward. And I just want to say, first and foremost, thank you not only, I think, to the feedback that we received from the public, but also, I think, for those individuals that have been involved for a really long time. And we all want the same thing, is we want to have a master-planned, really phenomenal, quality-type area in the downtown and city of Tempe. So I want to just say, I really appreciate the work of the city staff, everything that you guys have done. It really means a lot for your persistence, your flexibility, trying to get to where we are today and to ASU and your team. Thank you guys so very much for everything that you've done and being flexible and trying to find the best resolution moving forward. I wouldn't say this is perfect by any means, but I think it's still a work in progress, and I'm very comfortable with where we are. I think that we've come to a very good, solid compromise. So I just want to say thank you for that, and I really look forward to the work to come. So thank you.
And with that, I do want to recognize Greg Weaver and Angela Creedon with ASU, and Brian Kearney, all from Cattellus, and thank you for working with us. And I do appreciate the comments, Trevor, that you've mentioned. And we're excited to see the Stadium District move forward. I think it's a great opportunity for the city of Tempe, as well as for Arizona State University, and the potential in the future. I think it's exciting. We have a great relationship. And I just want to thank all those involved. With that, please vote. Councilmember Granville?
I voted nay.
That motion carries six to one with Councilmember Granville voting no. Next item on our agenda is... One second there. Is our non-consent agenda. All the items listed on the non-consent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for a second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. The first section of the non-consent agenda is miscellaneous items, bids, contracts, and resolutions. Item 6A1 is to award a construction contract to Payco Incorporated for the street preservation project for the hardy drive from Guadalupe Road to Southern Avenue. Is there any comments or discussion from the council on this? Is there a motion regarding item 6A1?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Cubey, and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. Councilmember Granville?
Aye.
That motion carries seven to zero. Item 6A2 is to award a job order number seven to Forsight Design and Construction Incorporated for the construction of Kiwanis Park Splash Playground located at 5223 South Ash Avenue. Is there any comments or discussion from the council under item 6A2? If not, I look for a motion on 6A2.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Shapiro, and seconded by Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage. Please vote. Councilmember Granville?
Aye.
That motion carries seven to zero. The next item is item 6A3, to award a one-year contract with four one-year renewal options to United Fire Equipment Company for the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus and associated equipment for the Tempe Fire Medical Rescue Department. Is there any comments or discussion from the council, or a motion on item 6A3?
Removed.
It's been moved by Councilmember Keating, seconded by Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage. Please vote.
Aye.
That motion carries seven to zero. Next item is item 6A4, is the annual excess insurance renewal program for fiscal year 2017-18 to include excess property, primary and excess liability crime, cybersecurity liability, excess workers' compensation, environmental pollution, underground storage tanks, and foreign travel insurance purchased through the city's insurance broker, Willis Towers Watson. Is there any comments or discussion from the council on item 6A4, or a motion for item 6A4? Moved by Councilmember Keating, seconded by Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage. Please vote.
Aye.
That motion carries seven to zero. The next section of our consent agenda is ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. These items will be read and introduced tonight, but no votes will be taken. The second hearing for these votes, for these items, is scheduled for July 27, 2017. Ordinance and items for introduction and first hearing, item 6B1, is to introduce and hold a first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the leasing and conveyance of the real property within the Graduate Hotel located at 225 East Apache Boulevard, and the execution of related lease documents, including a land and improvement lease and a memorandum of lease. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for July 27. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us under item 6B1? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none, I'll close that portion. Is there any comments or discussion from the council on item 6B1? Hearing none. The next item under this section is item 6B2, is to introduce and hold a first public hearing to adopt a resolution authorizing a general plan, projected land use map, and projected density map amendment to adopt a resolution waiving the accompanying development plan review application and to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment to MUED for the ASU Athletic Facilities District planning area. The applicant is Gamage &amp; Burnham, PLC. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for July 27, 2017. This is a public hearing item, and I have one card. Mr. Barker?
Mayor, members of council, Trevor Barker, Tempe, Arizona. Speaking to you tonight as a downtown resident who loves urban development and is a representative of property owners in downtown Tempe. The, we have great hopes and great expectations for Cattellus' project at the stadium. We think it's a fantastically well-put-together concept and master plan, and want to support its approval. But at the same time, we want to make sure that there's parity between public and private development in downtown Tempe. And to that end, in reviewing the zoning of the case, we know that the required development plan is not available at this time, but will be coming at a later date. And as such, when we reviewed the conditions of approval, not to be surprised, since there wasn't a specific development plan, unlike the typical 40 to, or 30 to 50 conditions of approval for a zoning case, there's only one in this condition. And so we're asking the consideration of an additional eight. And the intention of these is only to add parity between, again, between public and private development. We do not in any way, shape, or form want to hold up Cattellus' plans for the redevelopment of this property. Currently, as slated, properties in the MUED go to the JRC for hearings. The JRC and the DRC have different public notice requirements. And so we request that a stipulation be added that the JRC use the same public notice requirements as the DRC uses for properties being approved in the district. We also ask that, like other development in downtown, that is contingent upon these conditions, that the zoning expire or be subject to reversion after two years if the text amendment described in the IGA that was just approved in Section 2.1 is not completed by that time; if ASU and Tempe have not agreed per that IGA to address the fair cost of providing lease and fire services to the planning area; and only if residential is proposed. Again, this is not really a problem for commercial development, but the residential uses listed that the ASU and the Tempe have agreed to a method to address, per the IGA's statement, other economic impacts to the ASU Facilities District. Particularly, we were noticing schools, Tempe Town Lake Fee, fair share of regional circulation improvements, and park improvements such as Papago Park. Again, for commercial users, this really isn't a big deal, but because of the suggestion of adding 5,000 residents to this area, or as the density suggests by the Amendment to the General Plan Amendment as much as 15,000 residents to this area, I don't think that's their intent. It's just sort of what the general plan would allow in that area. These other considerations all of a sudden become important. We also, as previously mentioned, would like an east-west route vehicular from downtown, a new additional one that would be public accessible. And I would like the consideration of an additional left-turn lane from University to Rural Road to help facilitate all of the northbound movements off of, in that roadway. We would like to see the completion of the joint ASU-City of Tempe Traffic Study for downtown and the Stadium District before permits are pulled for this area. If residential uses are accommodated, the document so far speaks generally of mixed-use services for that area and wanting, if there's 5,000 additional residents, residential units there, services to support those such as grocery, dry cleaning, places of worship, and the normal things that would go on in a mixed-use urban area. An interesting one, when we talked about process. So the MUED says that there's one hearing and then the approval of a building. For private development, you go through a public meeting, you go through a DRC hearing, and then two council hearings. And so trying to create parity and process between the two, a proposal in front of you here as item number nine is limiting the MUED to 90 feet of height and making a text amendment to the city center zoning, which is all of the private development in downtown, to allow it a height of 90 feet. to allow it a height of 90 feet. That way, both private and public development can proceed with one hearing, private through the DRC, public through the JRC. And if either party wished to exceed that 90-foot height, that would require coming back to this body for additional height. The 90-foot heights, particularly in our conversations with Cattellus, would allow everything that they currently have planned in their first phases to move forward without delay. And so we were trying to pick something that was a Hanover-like height that would allow that to happen. The last one is ASU's support through this of the text amendment for downtown, again, to create that parity between the two of them, both at 90 feet. Again, our intention is not in any way, shape, or form to slow down the great work that Cattellus is doing in the stadium district. We want it to move ahead right away, but wanting to create parity and process in even the playing field between public and private development in the downtown, so the downtown doesn't get abandoned for the stadium district. Thank you.
And Mayor, if I may say, happy birthday this weekend.
Thank you. With that, the next part of this section is, would the applicant like to make a comment? Or it's only the first public hearing, but you can if you want, Ms. Vaz.
Mayor, members of the council. For your record, I'm Ms. Monjula Vaz, Law for Gamage &amp; Burnham. I'm here tonight on behalf of Cattellus. I, no, I, we appreciate all of Trevor's work. We've been talking to him, and we'll be making a full presentation on July 27. We're happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
The next item on our agenda is the scheduled items for second public hearing and final adoption that will be considered now. So these items will read and introduced on the 8th of 2017, and votes will be taken tonight. Under ordinances and items for second hearing and final adoption, item 6C1 is to hold a second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 23, Article 3, Division 1, Tempe City Code relating to park rules, generally by amending Section 23-40 relating to prohibited activities, and by amending Chapter 23, Article 5, Division 2, the Tempe City Code relating to preserve rules and regulations, by amending Sections 23-110 relating to the rules of use, criminal penalty relating to unmanned or aerial vehicles. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this item? Could you please get my? Deb? Is it you? Okay, yes, Deb Gainbry.
I'm back. Sorry, I lost reception for a minute.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor and council, for an opportunity. I just would like to make sure we remember to consider putting the desert parks in as well as Papago, or there was talk last time of Evelyn Holman, instead of saying desert parks, because that's not a defined term. So, anyway, I just wanted to make sure it was not missed, and I appreciate it. It's not been updated in the documents that are out there right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deb. Again, this is a public hearing item. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address us under item 6C1? Seeing none, I'll close that portion. Any comments or discussion from the council under item 6C1? Yes, Councilmember Navarro.
Yeah. With discussions that have happened, you know, over the course of this time, this probably went back about two years ago, trying to decide drone use, and as we went through the progressions, we got to a point where the state and the federal FAA really took on the shape that we wanted to see, really to adopt within our city limits. And we think it's a good state law and with the FAA regulation. Just to be clear, any ordinance that we do, either the Lake Papago Preserve, it still does not disqualify someone from flying into the park and then flying out of the park and landing it somewhere else. They can still do that. But with the laws and the FAA guidelines, they do have to get clearance from the tower to fly in that area because of a five-mile radius rule. In addition, there's state law that is added to it to make sure that if they are flying, they're flying within those regulations and those rules, and they're flying as respectful as possible not to impede on people's privacy or to cause harm. With that, I am open to, if there's any changes, but the state law and the FAA law really do guide this thing. And through neighborhood discussions, I think, you know, obviously there's some disagreement, but the majority would say the state and FAA law does do what is intended to do. With that, we can approve as-is, or we can change as-is, and I'll leave that for a discussion if you guys want to talk about it. But we always have the opportunity to go and check this in a year, two years, however it may be, if we do need to add more teeth to it.
Councilmember Spire.
Thank you, Mayor. I got some information from a couple of folks I know that know a lot more about this than I do, and I just want to run it by Councilmember Navarro, make sure that this is right. So, if I understand it correctly, the five-mile radius, if you draw that in Tempe, from Sky Harbor goes like pretty much all the way to like Kiwanis Park. And then the one coming from down south comes up all the way to pretty much Kiwanis Park, which ends up covering almost the entire city. So, almost anywhere in Tempe, if you want to fly one of these things, and it's also not just that you have to get clearance from the FAA, but you have to be, don't you have to be like licensed through the FAA to fly within that five-mile radius and before you can even get that clearance? Is that right?
You don't have to be licensed, I don't believe, but you do have to have the understanding that there are rules in place if you're a model aircraft. And the intent, I believe, was really for the hobbyists. I don't, you know, with the kid getting the $20 drone from Walmart, that was not the intent. The intent was for those hobbyists that have the higher regulated drones that can actually do and maneuver with a variety of different options. Those are the ones that we're targeting. Through that, obviously, education of those drones has always been offered and always has been allotted to, you know, use the proper rules and regulations, and the FAA has to be notified.
And I guess as a follow-up, if there isn't any licensing requirement, I would assume when you contact the FAA in order to get that clearance, that you have to provide contact information for yourself, your name, et cetera. And I would also think it likely, again, I don't know this for certain, but maybe you do, that there's some sort of complaint process whereby a resident could complain to the FAA and say, hey, I know this person was authorized by you to fly in this area at this time, and here's what they were doing, and it was, you know, out of control or whatever, which might make it likely that next time they call the FAA to try and get that clearance, they might not be able to get it. Does that kind of a process exist that you know of?
It would be more of a PD process than the FAA process. FAA would give the guidance, but the enforcement would come from the state law and the police enforcement, knowing the state law, and then actually having evidence that that practice happened.
Vice Mayor Adonio Savage.
I'm fairly open moving forward. I guess I look at it like, you know, I still have concerns from before and the working group. And Joel, I feel like you're definitely more of an expert on this area than I am. And I'm comfortable moving forward with the way it is, only to make sure that we address it maybe in a year and see. And if we need to incorporate more language, I'm happy to do that. I just don't know if that's exactly what we're trying to do. So until we kind of see how things operate and what some of the challenges are, there may be more things we want to change or add or delete based on how it operates in the next year. So, I don't know. What do you guys think about that opportunity?
I think that's good. And I was just asking, Councilmember Navarro, the intent of this is, you just want to pass this as-is and revisit it, as Vice Mayor mentioned?
Yeah, my intent would be pass as-is. Let's revisit it within a year. If we need to really, here, to be honest with you, I think the FAA and the state law is fine enough. I don't know if we really need to add it and incorporate it into the parks. However, we do have an existing ordinance for Tempe Town Lake on aircraft, on landing and/or launching and landing. We did agree just to use the Papago Preserve as part of that. I'm fine with that, but I kind of lean towards just let the state law and FAA law handle it and look at it within a year. If we do need to add language to add those parks, we'll do that.
Is that a motion?
Well, my motion is, my motion would be just to pull out the parks and let the FAA and state law regulate it. However, I'm open to just have it passed as-is. I just, in my, I know, here's the deal. In my belief, whatever ordinance we add is technically another layer of bureaucracy. It, in my opinion, is more feel-good. The state law and the FAA law trumps everything. So if we pass something with, if we pass something for the Tempe Town Lake and Papago Preserve, fine, it really doesn't have teeth, in my opinion. We're just saying we're not going to take off and land there. However, you can take off and land across the street, fly into the park, and then land it back on the other side of the street. It really has no teeth.
Okay.
So I looked up for discussion.
Yes. Councilmember Granville.
Yeah, yeah. First off, Councilmember Navarro, I want to appreciate, I really appreciate your candor on this. It's a really hard thing to spend two years on something in a really dedicated, focused way, to have the state and federal government sweep in and do 90% of what you were trying to do. And so, you know, I appreciate that. I know you've worked really hard on this, but is this something that if it is, as you say, just adding a layer of bureaucracy and not really doing anything in a quote-unquote feel-good, maybe we don't pass any of this? Maybe we just don't add a layer of bureaucracy?
Is that what you're saying, Councilmember Navarro?
And that's, all I'm saying is, I'm putting it up as a proposal to take out the language of the park for launching and landing. Now, here's the caveat, though. There's a difference between the drones and model airplanes. So the language would have to be, as it is right now, it says modeled aircraft. I don't know if you can technically say a drone is a model aircraft, or is a drone a drone, or a UVA.
Councilmember Spire.
I mean, since we're at the second hearing stage, and we're kind of talking about modifying it, and I think there's some other questions that maybe we could still get answered before voting on this. Are you okay with postponing this to a future meeting so that we can? I mean, I'm interested just in the FAA question, like, is there, if there's some kind of a complaint process, which, you know, a person could already use through the FAA to prevent someone from being able to launch and fly these big drones, then I would kind of err on the side of what Colby's saying, which is, you know, maybe we don't need the extra layer of bureaucracy as you described. And, you know, maybe us passing something tonight would be sort of hasty.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I think that's totally fine, too. And I think another thing I would definitely agree with or want to get feedback from is the enforcement piece, too, right? If that's going to be complicated for us to even do. I mean, I appreciate your candor, because I think that's, you know, what, how we should be doing it. And if we are just making it to feel good, that's not why we should be doing it. So, I'm happy to postpone it if you maybe just get your committee back together and take a quick look at it and bring back a final recommendation.
I'll do this. I would agree to postpone it. I think, to be honest with you, for council members, because it sounds like you each have individual questions on this, it's very clear how it is set up as it is and what PD can do. I think you just need to have that one-on-one to have that conversation, just so you feel comfortable on if we go forward with the language proposed or just no language at all. And let's see how it reacts. We'll check back in a year if we need to add something to this, because I tell you what, these things are changing overnight. So it's going to get complicated as we go down the road.
Yeah, I wanted to point out that you made that excellent change to allow the use of electric bicycles in the parks as long as their motor is not turned on, what we did as part of the whole process. And so that's an important update to that ordinance, to allow electric bikes, assuming they don't use the motor in that area. So that was an important update. I mean, I'm for just passing this, and this is something the neighborhood and North Tempe wants to see happen as well, and we can revisit it. And, you know, the same thing, when we had the ordinance about smoking in cars, it didn't necessarily stop that from happening, but it set up this expectation and this wish that we need to give added protection to.
It has been enforced that way, huh?
It has? Very good. Okay, so maybe we'll see some enforcement here. But we need to be conscious that this is our, you know, hope for a preserve.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would kind of like to echo Councilmember Cooby's comments on this ordinance. Seems like lately on council, we've been talking about the same thing time and time and time again, last several meetings. I would prefer just to either have this go to an up or down vote and let the chips fall where they may and move on. Thank you.
Councilmember Navarro.
Just on legal advice, if we pass this as-is, if we check within a year or two, whatever it may be, could we even reverse or pull back on the language of what we're proposing tonight?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Certainly, if there was a change in state or federal law, or if it was the council's will, you could certainly revisit this ordinance. You wouldn't necessarily even need to wait a year. You could revisit the ordinance at any point in time and make amendments.
Mayor. With all this being said, I would ask to pass this ordinance as-is.
Okay, this has been a motion by Councilmember Navarro, seconded by Vice Mayor Adonio Savage. Please vote. Councilmember Granville.
I vote aye.
That motion passes seven to zero. Okay. All right. Next item is item 6C2, to hold a second final public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 13 Tempe City Code by amending Section 13-100 relating to electronic filing for campaign finance. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this? Could you please get my attention on the item 6C2? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Any comments or discussion from the council or a motion on item 6C2? It's been moved by Councilmember Keating, seconded by Vice Mayor Adonio Savage. Please vote.
Aye.
That motion passes seven to zero. Next item on agenda is our current events and announcements. Councilmember Keating.
Nothing for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Keating.
Wednesday, the 21st, ASU's Global Institute of Sustainability is hosting an important Case Critical series event. Case Critical amounts to events that are very timely and sort of showcase ASU's expertise and knowledge, and this one is about the Paris departure, departure from the Paris Accords and what lies ahead. Hope you noticed that double entendre. Anyway, it's featuring Phoenix Mayor Greg Stanton, who's, as with our mayor, is part of the climate, mayor's climate commitment. So we're hoping to have a really vigorous discussion at the AE England Building next week and hope you to, hope for you to sign up and join us. We'll also have an expert in climate negotiations, Sylvia Klinsky, speak on all that has transpired. And then I'd also like to give a big thank you, and forgive me for the length of the thank you, because there's so many people to thank, but Miriam Ephrem, who's sitting back there in row four, I know she doesn't want to be identified, but it's been a long process. She's on the homeless task force with me and a lot of other people, a lot of other staff. And she has been also the main liaison with the Tempe Neighbors Talking Group in working with homelessness issues. And she started, along with Deb Gainbryley, who coincidentally is sitting right next to her, started this effort to really try and bring water and thirst relief to our homeless friends and street neighbors. And she was able to secure from Ricky Wright, who's the CEO of Alkaline Water, 432 cases of three-liter cases of water for, I think, do I have that right, nine pallets? Something like that. Wow. Three-liter bottles. And this is for three different stations, Terros, the organization Terros, the First United Methodist Church, and the Daba Cuisine, Ravine Aurora, who's our Don Carlosi meditarian, has been, has offered to be a distribution point for the water. These are big bottles of water, so a lot less wasteful, so thank you for that. So anyway, there's so many people that helped to bring this to fruition. Krista Roy from the Mountain Park Health Center, and Steve Methvin, our deputy city manager, was very helpful. But when it all came down to it, you were looking for help, and you needed to get a 24-foot truck, and capability was pretty enormous not to have to make 40 different trips. So she reached out to the Maricopa County Emergency Management, who said, and that was Stephanie Miller, and she said, call Tempe Fire Medical Rescue. And so you talked to Chief Reeves and Captain Justin Williams, who heads up our community emergency response team. And they went to the rescue within just hours. Yes, I know, but you put it all together, Miriam. So I just want to thank everybody who made this all possible, and from the donor, from Ricky Wright, who's incredibly generous with donating water and will continue to be generous. So thankful for that. And to all the staff and community members that were part of this, and sorry to say, Miriam, but I'm going to thank you again for putting this all together. Thank you. It's an enormous effort from so many people. Thank you.
Councilmember Navarro.
I have nothing.
Vice Mayor Adonio Savage.
First shout-out to the mayor. Happy birthday, Mayor. And I mean, does this mean like we're the same age now? I don't know, because he looks, tends to like to remind me how I'm older than him. But that's okay. Well, I just want to just first and foremost say happy Father's Day to all the fathers that are here or out there. And of course, to my father, I want to say happy Father's Day, Dad. I'm sure the family would agree that I got my best qualities from you. And I just want to say how much I really love and admire who you are, the man you are, and the role model that you've really shown us forever. And I'm just really fortunate to have you in my life and just want to say thank you for that.
Councilmember Granville.
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Spire.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say hello to my family, my wife and girls, who are actually watching from North Carolina right now, along with my in-laws, and also want to wish a happy Father's Day as well to all the dads out there, including my dad, Howard, my grandfather, Jerry, and my father-in-law, Rex, who is watching again with the family in North Carolina. Thank you.
With that, I just want to, and I mentioned it earlier, but I mean, you know, we all know how great the city of Tempe is in terms of our community, caring community, and everything we do from a quality of life standpoint, and to really recognize at great lengths our heritage. And just want to remind everyone, this Saturday at the Tempe History Museum, you're going to have the Juneteenth celebration from 11 to 4. It's really exciting. I know I read the proclamation earlier, but it's something I think it's a big part of our history, and I think it's something that, you know, we celebrate all kinds of diversity in the city, and we're grateful for that, because it's really who we are as Tempeans. And with that, I just want to wish all the fathers out there a wonderful Father's Day. And with that, I don't have anything else. We will go to the next item on our agenda is our public appearances. So according to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the city council may only discuss matters listed on this agenda. Matters discussed during public process cannot be discussed unless they are specifically agendized. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker, and no speakers, visual aids, or recorded tapes, they are not allowed. Members of the public shall refrain from making any personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, or from becoming boisterous while addressing the city council or attending this meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, clapping, stomping of feet, yelling, or any other similar demonstrations are also prohibited, and violations of these rules will result in removal from the council chambers. I do have two scheduled public appearances tonight listed on the agenda. The first one is Dan Christensen, to discuss the city of Tempe's civil engineering permits. Mr. Christensen. No. Christensen? You're there? No, I'm just kidding. All right, we'll move on. Next, Shereen Lerner.
Thank you, Mayor and council. My name is Shereen Lerner. I live in Tempe. I have the good fortune to volunteer as a member of the Tempe Transportation Commission. I'm also on the Parks and Recreation Board, and I have served on the Tempe Community Council for seven years. So I feel very fortunate to actually be a volunteer and a member of the community that helps to participate and do things, to provide input. I'm here today to speak about the process on how information is transmitted from boards and commissions to the council, and the manner in which the council considers the work of boards and commissions. boards and commissions. First of all, I want to thank those of you who did respond to my email. I really appreciate that from my May 26th email that regarded the process that was taken by, of how we give input. I'm not here really to speak about the specifics of any particular project. That's not my goal. There are a number of things that have come up through these boards and commissions that I serve on that you have addressed in different ways. I wanted to ask you to consider the process and how you make your decisions. Boards and commissions are only recommending bodies, we know that, but we also want to know that our voices are being heard. And it seems that, at least in my short time on these boards and commissions, there are times when we're not, our input is not considered, that the council moves forward based on a variety of other reasons, which all may be perfectly valid, but that what the work that we do is not heard. And Tempe is, one of the great things about Tempe is that we are a community that wants a lot of citizen input. But when our citizen input is not considered as part of something or when we feel it is not being considered, then it makes it feel, it's frustrating by those boards and commissions. And so what I'm asking is, as you know from my email that I had sent to you, we had spent, for example, on the pickleball courts, hours of discussion. We spent that on, in transportation, on streetcar, we spent it on a number of different issues. But when it comes down to the decisions, we're not sure what information you're hearing. The staff works very hard to work with us on giving us information so we can provide recommendations. But our concern, or my concern, is whether or not this process is functioning as it should. What information is conveyed to the council? What do you actually hear about what we have heard and why we are making recommendations? Do you actually hear the recommendations? Do you hear the reasons behind the recommendations? Those are questions that have come up by members of these boards and commissions and myself based on some recent events that have happened. So what I'm asking is for you to consider how we can actually improve the process. How can we get the work that the boards and commissions are doing? Give them a fair hearing, make sure that it is heard by you so that we feel that we're not just sort of spinning our wheels, so to speak. How can our citizen volunteers be assured that you'll consider our work? We know you, we're only recommending. We know that you make the final decisions, but we want to be sure that there's a process that our work is heard by you and that it's given a fair hearing. So all I'm asking is to think about that, how we can improve that process.
And thank you so much, Shereen. And first, thank you so much for volunteering. We really do appreciate all the volunteers because we know everyone's busy in their lives and these boards and commissions are volunteer-based. And the whole intent of the board and commissions is to get community involvement and engaged and get that feedback to feel a sense of belonging and pride. And you're absolutely right. And you and I have spoken on the phone many times and just recently, the issue that you brought up with the pickleball courts, one of the things this council determined is because of the budget process, we are doing that public outreach. So what we're doing is we just put some money aside, but we're going to have public hearings through the Parks and Rec Board regarding how many pickleball courts potentially, is it even something that should be considered? Is it also, where is it going to go if we move forward with that? So that public process is still happening. The only thing we did at the budget hearing was put some money aside for that use because that was the time to do that. So we do value, and I think I can speak on behalf of the council, our public input from the advisory boards because it's so important. We take that very seriously and transparency, even so much as how transparent our city is becoming. And we can look at a lot of examples, but thank you so much for your time and for bringing this to, addressing this and bringing it to the forefront because it is important.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cooby?
I'd like to talk about a different example and, you know, I share your concern. It was about the first and Ash Street intersection and the Transportation Commission recommended status quo, not going with any of the options. By consensus, the council decided to go with the roundabout option, which I know that Transportation Commission rejected because they recognized not only was it going to be $2.3 million with a less safe, less safe for pedestrians and for bicyclists, but that it might amount to $10 million more in land acquisition costs. So you guys had very good reasons, but it was presented to us as just status quo. And it would have been really helpful at the time to have whoever the designated representative is from the Transportation Commission to be there and give the reasons because you guys spent hours on it. We were spending, you know, a half an hour at most on it. So, you know, that was a case where, I mean, what you're saying is so, rings so true to me that we really need to hear more than just status quo, option one. We want to hear the reasons why and to have the representative there at the IRS or at the presentation would be very good.
Yeah, and to that point, one of the things, since I've been mayor, which hasn't happened, what I instituted was that the board chairs would give an annual report to the council on the committees. And we started doing that because I thought it'd be good to that point to hear from the board and commission members about the meetings that you guys have and what areas are you looking for that we can improve on and so forth. But it, I mean, it does come from the board chairs, so we'll make sure.
To Councilmember Cooby? So just, I agree with that. The question we would have is how would we know? I think we would be happy to send a representative if we know that there's a particular time to present. So perhaps that's part of that process change where it could be we're going to be hearing this at this session and so we ask that a representative come to explain our recommendation or something because we know we can't come to every meeting.
It's also in our report, but yeah. Councilwoman Navarro?
Mayor, thank you. And I love the ideas and thank you for bringing this up to my attention. I think many of us have already been on boards and commissions and I agree with you 100%. And I think this is a great retreat type of question for us when we go into August because there's some, there's this value to this thing. Even if there's not a representative here on example, the roundabouts, the board and commission did recommend this, just to have that piece, I mean, it's in a report, but to have that piece said verbally to the audience, doesn't matter about being the report, having it said verbally, that holds weight and that has value to what you guys are doing. And I think it holds value to the fact that you guys are hearing that the board and commission recommends this. So I just think we could probably fine tune this a lot better. I think this would be a great retreat type of process.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shereen.
Thank you.
That's all I have for scheduled public appearances. Next item is unscheduled public appearances. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this council on unscheduled public appearances? Could you please get my attention? On any item, on anything. Seeing none, we'll close that process. We are adjourned.